Good afternoon and welcome to today's Cobb County Board of Commissioners work session. This April 25th of 2023. Today, we have two presentations to be brought before commissioners. They will include a housing assessment and also an update on economic development. I believe you've had a request to move the economic development initiatives up if commissioners are amenable to that. Okay, I see it by the general nods. So we'll go ahead and start with our Economic Development Director. Please feel free to join us up front here, Sabrina.
Good afternoon Chairwoman and Board Members. And County Manager. I'm Sabrina Wright, Economic Development Director for the county, and I just wanted to give you all an update on economic development. So first I'll start with just a little bit of background on economic development. Essentially, economic development is all the programs and policies that we put into place to create jobs here in the county and increase capital investment so that we can improve the quality of life and well-being for Cobb County residents. We do that through a myriad of different programs, including business attraction, business retention, which is working with our existing companies in the county, our small business and entrepreneurship efforts, as well as redevelopment and film permitting. Business attraction is any project that we work that includes bringing a new company into Cobb County. So whether they're from another state, country, or another county, if they're new to Cobb and bringing jobs to Cobb County, thus that's how we attract companies here, our business recruitment, business attraction. So sometimes that's just a new company opening, new headquarters or things like that. Business retention and expansion is our efforts to work with our existing companies in Cobb. So essentially, once the grand opening happens and we do the ribbon-cutting ceremony, the day after that, that new company becomes an existing company in Cobb County. And we still need to work with those companies to ensure that they continue to thrive here in Cobb. They grow, they prosper, and they have opportunities to expand with our support. So our goal in that is to build relationships with those company executives to ensure that they know that we are here as their advocate and as their friend from the county perspective, and we're able to answer any questions they may have in regard to any needs or challenges, whether those challenges are things that are directly within the Economic Development Department or otherwise. I have, we have what we call our Team Cobb, and actually, our Team Cobb is represented here today. Our partners in economic development include outside of Cobb, but also the Georgia Department of Economic Development, WorkSource Cobb, our utility partners at Georgia Power, Cobb BMC, all of those partners, and of course, the Cobb Chamber of Commerce as well. So in supporting our existing businesses, we have a goal to reach out to 300 businesses per year. And so that means that we're literally knocking on doors, doing those cold calls with businesses via phone, and just out boots on the ground to make those connections with our business community. And again, we're asking them, what are your needs, what are your challenges, and how can we support your growth here in Cobb so that you continue to create jobs for Cobb County residents? And one way that we decided that we want to provide educational and networking opportunities for those businesses is to create what we call our Existing Industry Luncheon. And we've had one of these events already, and so this is just a quarterly event that will rotate in different districts throughout the county. We had our first Existing Industry Luncheon in March, and we had our partners at the table that day who were able to speak to those businesses and talk about how their respective agencies support economic development in the county. So with the Georgia Department of Economic Development, sharing information about all of their business incentives and how they should support job growth and expansion, down to WorkSource Cobb, talking about the needs that we most often hear from businesses, which include finding the right talent, retaining that talent, and also transportation, access to transportation to the workforce. And those challenges are things that we hear throughout the county. It doesn't matter what district, those two challenges are the greatest needs that we see. We also have redevelopment inventory, and part of our, I brought this section here. I want to talk about the redevelopment inventory at this point in this presentation because as we're assisting companies with their location efforts in Cobb County, a lot of times we want to create what we call, sometimes I like to call them those geographical-based incentivized areas like opportunity zones or enterprise zones. And those are areas in the county that have been identified as those that are in need of revitalization or redevelopment. And so part of what we maintain at the Economic Development Department here is a redevelopment inventory. And these are parcels or sites within your respective districts that you all as commissioners identify as, you know, being in need of redevelopment, they need that extra focused attention. And so if there are any parcels that you all want to add to this list, we update this list annually. In fact, I'll be reaching out to each of you individually to see if we can have a conversation and see if there's anything that you would like to add to this list coming up. We currently have about 14 sites on our redevelopment inventory. And typically, those sites are, we have most of them in South Cobb right now, and actually, they're in what will be the new, well, what is, the new city of Mableton and then Canton Road area. But there are sites all over the county or different corridors that could utilize that redevelopment effort. And often, how we want to approach that is working in partnership with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to see if there's a way that we can create some more of those incentivized areas to encourage development in those areas, whether those be incentives for job tax credits or things like that. This is our current list of redevelopment sites. Again, there are 14, 15 parcels on this site. Again, the bulk of them are in South Cobb. And we'll have an opportunity to add additional sites to this as well. And I said, this list is updated annually. So essentially, my staff will go out to each property, they'll take pictures of the site. If the site has been redeveloped, for example, if we look at the properties this year, they're on the list from last year. We go out and we see, hey, the site has been redeveloped, there's a new tenant in there, it's not vacant, it's no longer vacant. They've painted, they've done landscaping outside, it looks improved. Then it can come, it can come off the list. But essentially, most of these properties are at least 20 years or older and are oftentimes vacant as well. And while we're speaking about redevelopment, of course, we work with the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. So economic development staff is essentially the county liaison for the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. We maintain their records, their minutes and agendas for them. Of course, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority is a board where, seven-member board. They recently, at their most recent meeting, just elected board members. So we now have Jason Gaines, who previously worked at the county as the chair, and Joel Cope as the vice chair of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. And they meet the third Monday monthly at 9:00 a.m. And this is again, the map of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, of their boundaries. And to the north, that is East West Connector as their northern boundary. Canton is, I think Canton Road to the west, and Douglas and Fulton Counties to the south and the east. Resimplify, this is a property search tool that, yes ma'am.
Sabrina, I believe Commissioner Burrell has a question.
Yes.
Um, what, what, can you go back to the South Cobb Redevelopment?
Yes, ma'am.
Boundaries? Because a lot of that is in City of Mableton too now, correct?
It is, absolutely. So they will have to work that out as to how they're going to move forward with the new city of Mableton. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So will any of the South Cobb redevelopment area remain in unincorporated Cobb once the city of Mableton takes over?
What is, I don't know their northern boundary or for, the bulk of that is in Mableton, I know. That's East West Connector to the north, the northern boundary up there.
We'll have to, have to look at it on GIS, but I believe that it's, it's all going to be incorporated, but we can confirm that. It'll be a very small portion, and it'll be one of the discussions that we'll need to have moving forward. And I mean, I'm sure they'll, it will require general assembly action, but is, what does that look like in terms of who appoints that board now? Because of course, the Board of Commissioners has appointees. I'm not sure if some of that responsibility will now transfer over to the city of Mableton, but that'll be another good conversation to have as we move forward.
And it looks like some of that area is actually within the city of Smyrna as they've annexed down through Veterans Memorial.
Right. Again, as many of you know, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority currently owns 50 parcels of land, and they're actively marketing that for redevelopment. So again, that is a conversation for Mableton and everyone moving forward. So again, back to Resimplify, this is a property search tool that we're utilizing now. There's actually a link on the Economic Development page so that potential new businesses that are interested in locating or existing companies that want to relocate in Cobb have an opportunity to search for parcels of land. Typically, with programs such as CoStar and LoopNet, you mainly get a lot of the larger commercial and industrial sites. With Resimplify though, with our huge entrepreneur and startup population in Cobb County, we've had a lot of inquiries about smaller retail and retail space and office space. And so Resimplify also provides that information for those parcels as well. And this, we're, we've contracted with Resimplify, and this is a partnership with the Chamber in all the cities in Cobb County. So we're all utilizing Resimplify as a Cobb County effort. And so both Cobb County government and the Chamber have access to countywide parcels, whereas all the cities simply have the boundaries within their cities that show, that show them their availability. And again, this link is on our website, so people can, if they're interested, they can look at sites on their own. We also focus again heavily on small businesses. With our large community of small businesses and entrepreneurs in Cobb County, we focus on that as well. And we've made a concerted effort to reach out to our small businesses. Again, we have a goal of reaching out to 300 and making 300 small business connections every year. We have, we've created what we call Business Concierge Open Office Hours. And so there's a link again on the Cobb County Economic Development page where you can schedule time with our small business project manager and actually block off time on her calendar every week, Wednesdays from 8:30 to 10:30, to have an appointment and discuss anything related to doing your business in Cobb, opening your business in Cobb, walking you through the process of what that may look like with various departments and everything. And our Business Concierge goes a little bit deeper. Sometimes we get a lot of questions about, well, what is the next step? What do I need to do? How do I go about getting a business license? And so we'll walk them through all of that process, as well as attend meetings with them, schedule those meetings for them, because we want to be again, that friend and the advocate for the business community and those who are interested in opening businesses here in Cobb. Another event that we've created specifically for our small business community is what we call Coffee and Conversations in Cobb. And we actually have the next one in District One, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Gamble's District. And this is a quarterly small business networking event. And this again, an opportunity for the small business community to learn about how Cobb is there to support their business, how they're able to gain a business license, learn things about, from the police department. We've had a lot of representation from various departments in the county who speak to the business owners, even the police department talking about security cameras at their businesses, and how they can work with that, work with that company to install those cameras and monitor those cameras for them. Down to DOT who may share information about roads that may be blocked off and things of that nature for road work projects that could potentially impact the operations of a specific business. And so we did our first one, our first Coffee and Conversation in South Cobb. We host these events at a local small business. Our goal in doing that is to drive foot traffic to that business, to increase their patrons as well, and also to just get them more involved and to minimize the impact on the business. We host this event from 7:30 a.m. until 9:00 a.m. in the morning. So again, the next event will be May 15th in District One. This is a little bit of information about our year-to-date numbers. Again, our goal is 300 per year. So for our economic development, existing industry visits, we've completed 87 of those visits. And again, we rotate these visits throughout the district, through every district throughout the county. So we've done 87 total existing industry visits this year and 75 small business connections. And a lot of our small business connections, those include calls that we receive through those open office hours and things like that. So a lot of times, we're going out to small businesses, but we're also receiving and responding to a lot of incoming calls as well.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Is this something new that you started?
Yes, ma'am.
Visiting 300 businesses a year?
It is, and I will say I was a bit ambitious initially. My goal was 500, but when we started, we started having all our different programs and events, and I said, we might want to pull back just a little bit. Let's start at 300, and if there's a need to increase that, then we'll, we'll move up from there.
I think that's great, especially in some of the areas that are, you know, wanting to expand and regroup, redevelop.
Right, I agree. With our Existing Industry Luncheon, I mean, we, it was very well attended, and we always, for all of our events, let me go back to that. We always invite the district commissioner, as well as the chairwoman, of course. And we do that because we want that community to hear updates from their specific district, what's going on in their district, as well as the economic development information to support their business. And we get a lot of great feedback from that. We actually had one of our utility partners, I think she was from Georgia Power, who said, I've never been to an event like this where the fire department came or where the police department came. And that was such relevant information. She said I was going to go, she said she was going to go back and tell all the other communities to add that layer to their events as well. But we do reach out to those businesses, and often, they don't have a need at that time. They may not have a need at that time at all, but sometimes they, Tara is our project manager for Existing Industry, and she'll leave her card, even if it's just with the receptionist who opens the door, answers the phone, she'll leave her card. And she's gotten phone calls back saying, hey, there's a road closed over here, can you tell me what that's about? Or there's been some dumping here, can you tell me what that's about? But now they have a contact at the county, who they know to reach out to directly, and they're not having to go through multiple phone calls and voicemails and emails. And so what we also do with that is we do what we call warm introductions to the other departments, meaning if they need to reach out to DOT, we'll email DOT with them copied on that email, making that introduction. We'll schedule a meeting for them and attend it with them if they like us to do that as well.
And you, you came last month to, and was the keynote speaker at Northeast Cobb Business Association.
Yes.
You did a great job, of course, and I think a lot of folks didn't know about all the services that you, your department offers. And I know a lot of that you brought with you in your new role, and we're glad to have you back.
Thank you, I'm so happy to be back in Cobb. This is my home, and I love seeing projects come to fruition in the county where I grew up. So I mean, this really means a lot to me. And this is some of our March data right here. Again, this is kind of just reiterating some of the year-to-date numbers that we have with our business retention efforts, our economic development activity as a whole. We put the number of new business licenses up there, even though I don't manage business license renewals at all, just to know, just to inform you all of how many businesses are coming into Cobb County. And a lot of those businesses are small businesses. And so even though our goal is only 300, but look how many we have so far this year, 273. So our goal of 300 may seem ambitious, but it's just a small drop in the bucket. Often, I know we hear a lot with economic development projects, incentives, incentives, right? And so what I like to share, the reason I bring this up, because I know this can be a touchy topic, but I like to bring this up, and I bring this up every time I speak at different business associations and things like that because people think that we're giving out money, and I say, we don't have money to give out like that, we don't do that. At the county, all of our money is taxpayer dollars. So essentially, any, any incentives that we offer to businesses are job tax credits at the state level, or what we can offer is caps on fees that we have. And so sometimes we entertain those as incentives, but we're not giving out taxpayer dollars, we don't do that. An upcoming grant that we want, that we're currently working on in collaboration with CDBG is a commercial facade grant program. I think I may have mentioned that to some of you all as well. So we're working on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to present that to you all and bring that to you all for your consideration soon. Enterprise Zone, this is also an incentive, but this is in partnership with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And this is what I like to call one of those geographically-based incentives, meaning it's a defined area that's approved by DCA. And if a business locates within this, within this district or within this area, and they're creating jobs and adding a lot of capital investment to the county, they're eligible to receive this enterprise zone incentive. And sometimes this is what is called a graduated tax abatement. Of course, it has to come before the board every time for approval. So anytime we share information about potential incentives with businesses, we let them know these things, you may qualify or may not, and of course, everything is left to the board for approval. In working with our small business and entrepreneurship community, we also have an entrepreneurship grant in collaboration with the Development Authority of Cobb County. It's funded by the Development Authority, and this is a grant for small businesses that are, that appear to be sustainable, that are creating jobs, we want them to create jobs as well. But this is a grant up to $10,000 per business. We have several requirements, and we've listed only four of them here. Of course, you have to have a Cobb County business license. If they're within one of the incorporated cities, they're also eligible for the grant, but they have to have that city business license as well because all the cities are still in Cobb, so we still support them in that way. We also require that they have, that they show proof that they've completed some type of entrepreneurial program, whether it be something at the KSU Small Business Development Center or the Women's Entrepreneurship Initiative, that's a program in Atlanta, or something of that nature so that we can see that they have invested some of their own time, money, and energy into their business. They've created a business plan, they have a marketing strategy, and they're able to show us those things. So we don't just award a grant to someone with just an idea and they've not contributed anything further to that idea. And also, they have to agree to maintain their business in Cobb County for three years after they receive that grant award.
Thank you, and Sabrina, this is formerly the Innovation or Innovative Grant that we had with the Development Authority.
It is, correct, I think it was the Entrepreneurship and Innovation Grant. And in our efforts, this is another thing that I'll admit that I started reviewing once I came back to Cobb County. I wanted to revise the guidelines for the grant, not necessarily revise, I guess revise is the correct word. But basically, it was a lot of, a little bit of redundancy throughout the grant and some of the language. So we reduced some of that redundancy in the language.
In the application.
In the application and the guidelines. And we amended the scoring sheet as well, just so that when we're scoring applicants and being fair with all businesses across the board, if they qualify based on the score, then they can receive the grant. So if they, if they score properly, they can receive the grant, and if they don't score properly, they don't. And so that reduces any type of opinions or any ambiguity from the scoring process and from the awarding process as well.
Commissioner Burrell, did you have a question? Sabrina, do we provide that grant on a rolling basis, or is there a particular?
Yes, we, this grant is, the applications, we receive them year-round, and they are reviewed on a quarterly basis by a committee of our scoring committee. And there are outside stakeholders in the county consisting of people at the Cobb Chamber. We have a small business person owner in the county who's on the committee, as well as banker. So they're stakeholders, no county staff reviews the applications. So we bring the applications to their attention, and we schedule the meetings for them, and we participate on the call just to, you know, maintain a record, but we don't score them at all. Every company project that receives any type of incentive from the Cobb, from Cobb County that is approved by you all, the board, they have to go through an annual compliance. So every year in April, they have to send us back their compliance report, meaning we're tracking how far along are they with their incentive agreement. For example, if they promise to spend, let's say, create 500 jobs and invest 25 million into the county, well, and this is a 10-year agreement. At year two, how many jobs have you created so far? How much investment have you made so far? And we're making sure and tracking every year that that continues to increase and that they meet that incentive requirement that they agreed to, that they all signed to, and that you all signed off on and approved for them. And if not, if they are not in agreement with it, or if they are in non-compliance, then we do have a clawback provision in place so that they may be, may be required to repay the funds that they receive from Cobb County. Meaning if they had a fee cap and a fee waiver or something like that, a cap on business fees, business license fees that they did not have to pay, and they're no longer meeting those requirements, they could be required to refund the county, the money that would have been required initially. This is our film permitting, this also falls under the Office of Economic Development. So every film permit that comes through the county comes through my office. And, well, I will say that if they're, if they're filming in a city, then they go through the city because they have, every city has their own economic development department as well. These are some of the films that we've encountered. I think we have about 17 year-to-date since January. And they come through our office because we want to make sure that all the correct departments that need to know about these films are aware. For example, of course, Cobb County legal team needs to know, but the police department may need to know, fire may need to know. There may be roads that need to be blocked off for filming or parking. And so we want to make sure that we're tracking all of that information and ensuring that everyone who needs to know about it is aware. And here, we've just listed out some of our partners. This is a lot, but again, this is not all. Economic development is such a team sport, and it takes all of us to make these businesses successful and keep them here in Cobb County. And so we work with a boatload of partners to ensure that happens, including all of our cities and all the ones that I named, WorkSource, Cobb, Cobb Chamber, Metro Atlanta Chamber, and our utility companies especially. And that is all I have. Do you all have any questions for me?
Sabrina, how long have you been back with us?
I came back in September of last year.
I feel like you have hit the ground running, and everything that we perceived during your interview has truly come into fruition and more. You have brought a new energy to economic development for the county. And I know the work that you're doing has already had an impact, but I look forward to the greater impact the programs that you're putting in place and strengthening are going to have for our existing businesses, new businesses, but even those that are interested in starting businesses. I can't thank you enough for the time that I've been here. I've never seen someone take time to just review all of the activity that we do inside our county, inside Cobb County government with respect to economic development because we've had different workshops to talk about economic development as a whole. But I think the more that we understand it, the better partners we can be in economic development as well. So thank you very much, I truly appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate your all's support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, yes, Commissioner Shuffield?
Sabrina, with respect to the opportunity zone, I recall in our conversation that it, it was close to reaching its expiration.
Enterprise Zone.
I'm sorry, the opportunity zone.
Opportunity zones, I don't know that we have any more opportunities than, yeah, opportunity zones have already expired, and those have to be approved by DCA, they're not really approving opportunity zones anymore.
Okay.
But we do have an enterprise zone. I think the one you're referring to is the Ostele Powder Springs Enterprise Zone.
No, I meant the opportunity zone, thank you Jessica.
Okay, okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, I heard there's one opportunity zone through the state over Dobbins, but it's not one through the county.
Right, that would be Marietta.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you again. With that, we're going to hear from our Community Development Director, Jessica Gwynne, on a housing assessment.
Yes, thank you, and just to piggybacking off Sabrina's presentation, we're, we're really excited to have Sabrina on board. She's got a great team with her, we've got Brittany and Tara in the back here. We've got Brittany and Tara in the back here.
Thank you, Brittany and Tara.
Yes, Brittany and Tara both also came to Economic Development by way of the County Attorney's Office and the Fire Department, so we are thankful to have them and just the energy that that whole team has brought to Economic Development's been very exciting for us, so.
Very excited.
Moving on, I want to introduce to you today Lauren Blazek with the Atlanta Regional Commission. Last year, I guess it was about this time last year, we received, we were awarded Community Development Assistance through the Atlanta Regional Commission's Community Development Assistance Program, and that's a program that provides professional service to counties and cities to review various planning needs. So we asked them to help us take a look at housing, to really just kind of get an idea about what's the state of housing, so that way we've got some good information to share with you all as the board to consider as you want to discuss housing policy for the county and what direction you might like to go there. So this is really intended to be informative. On your, at your seats, you have a binder. The binder has the housing assessment in there. It's being uploaded to our website, so it'll be accessible to everyone who wants to take a look at it. Lots and lots and lots of data in it, lots of numbers. There's also a copy of the presentation for the ARC today, so that you can follow along. But with that, I'm going to introduce Lauren, and she'll introduce her team.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Lauren Blazek. I am actually the Program Manager for the Lovable Centers Initiative, LCI program, at Atlanta Regional Commission, so again, really glad to be here today. I took over this project as Project Manager after a couple of our key housing staff left, and did my best to get started on a draft document, but thankfully, Renata Madison and then Kristen Allen joined our team, both in January, and so they were able to take this over and do a phenomenal job on this document. It's been through several iterations and lots of comments back and forth from staff, and I think it's in a really good place, and I think it's going to be really helpful for you all as you move forward in thinking about how to address the housing issues here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Renata, and she is going to give you a very informative presentation. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. Again, I am Renata Madison. I'm Principal Planner at ARC, and yes, this was one of the first projects that I received when I got to ARC, and it was a really good project. I've been in housing for seventeen years, so you guys probably already got the, I'm sure she just said you mentioned, she just mentioned that you got the assessment. It is, it's pretty heavy, it's a lot of data, and you can just go, kind of go through it at your leisure, because it's a lot of data. We worked really hard on it, and so today, I'm just going to present to you some of the highlights, some of the things that you can kind of like pay attention to that actually stood out to us while we did this assessment. So we'll go ahead and get started. So today's topics, we're going to talk about some of our housing priorities, the growth that's going on here. There's a lot of growth going on in Cobb County right now. We're going to talk about how the housing stock has changed, household incomes has changed, and so this is some cities in Cobb County. I'll give you some summaries of some key findings. We're going to talk a little bit about the metro housing Atlanta strategies, and then we can take some questions at the end, or unless you guys got questions as we go. It is pretty data-heavy, so if you do have questions, just feel free to like interrupt me, because it may be a lot to remember by the end. Okay, so we are the Atlanta Regional Commission. We have eleven counties that we represent and work with. The ARC, we work with transportation, we work with...
Ms. Renata, if you don't mind just coming a little bit closer to the mic. I know you have great information to share, and I don't want to lose any of it.
Well, is this better?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome.
You're soft-spoken.
Okay, so this, again, this is the eleven regions that we work with, with the ARC. So our priorities in 2023, number one priority, we have is housing, so that's a good thing. As Lauren mentioned, they, we have a whole, we got a housing team now at the ARC, so we've been doing a lot of housing around the Atlanta metro area. One of the other things that we're working on at ARC is infrastructure law and transportation planning. Just giving you an overview of what we're kind of working on right now. So our regional priorities right now is assets, opportunity help, education, traffic, infrastructure, and stability. All of these things are directly closely related to housing. So Cobb County growth patterns. I'm sure you guys are not going to be surprised by this data, and it's probably increased now, because most of our data goes up to, in this presentation, it mostly goes up to 2020 with some predictions going forward, but we do have some updated data in the assessment that included Mapleton, which was incorporated, you guys know, back in November. So the housing assessment as far as population and things are included in the assessment, but not in the presentation, because we don't have a lot of, the census tracts have changed, so we're not able to present trends that have come before now. So going forward, we'll be able to track Mapleton and the population and the different growths in a later time, but right now, we can only go, the census tract is, it was split up in so many different ways, it's kind of impossible to get those trends without doing a really deep dive right now.
Did the census tract change as a result of the census, or as a result of the new city?
As a result of the new city.
Okay.
So Mapleton at first was, before it got incorporated, had several different census tracts running through it, so was it like, once it got incorporated, we can just add those? What we would have had to do was take out those portions that were in the different tracks and put them together to come up with a better number. So Cobb County continues, one of the fastest growing in the state of the southeast, the population, seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine, that's in 2020, and that has, since then, has been increased. You guys have added the city in that, again, that information is in the assessment. So right now, what we are looking at is definitely an increase, and it's an increase in population, and I'm going to break it down in a little bit farther, how, what numbers, or what age groups, and what brackets that actually looks like for Cobb County as a whole. So population and households, if you can look here, so you can see that in 2010, and we have the data up to 2022, if you see, everything is on a rise. The population was in green in the household units, so you guys are growing much faster than the household units that you guys kept forward. So right now, we are at a deficit, Cobb County is at a deficit, and what the growth looks like. The green line is the actual population, which is steadily going up, and now it is, there's a disparity between how many units you have to actually house those people. Here is some data from, from one household. It kind of shows the change, and it kind of gives you a little bit about how those households are changing and the increase. If you go look, three-person households is changing about fourteen percent. So a lot of what is going on now is our, the population is changing, but so is the family sizes. There's a lot more one-family, two-families, single mothers, workforce, and so therefore, larger units, three and four bedrooms, it's not kind of being sold out at the moment. And here's the change in the age population. If you can look, you guys have a huge, between 2010 and 2020, look at the green arrows of your aging populations. That's a lot of growth, more people that are, people are living longer, so it's a lot of things that we contribute to why that population is growing. But if you can look across the board, it's not, in Cobb County, it's not growing in other areas as much as it is for your elderly population. So those are mostly one- and two-bedrooms. Most elderly people or older people in those age brackets want to kind of have one and two bedrooms, and they probably had houses at some point, so we're just speculating, but the trend is actually showing that you have, your population is increasing by a lot for your elderly population. And here is, again, just some more information about the senior households and how they are increasing from just needing a little bit more than what you're able to provide. And it's showing a deficit where you don't have. So I want you to keep listening to that trend about how a certain demographic is growing, yet there's, the housing stock is not growing to meet that population growth. So what this looks like is cost burdenedness. You know, cost burdenedness means that if anyone is paying more than thirty percent of their total income towards housing, then they're cost burdened. And so our seniors, and not just in Cobb County, but nationwide, are finding themselves being cost burdened, and here is just, and we have, not only our renters are being cost burdened because the increase in rent, but homeowners are also being cost burdened because increased taxes and fixed income, so there's a lot of means of why that could be happening.
And that's Cobb County-specific data.
This is only, yeah, this here is Cobb County-specific. I will break into a few cities in just a moment, but all of the data here is specifically the Cobb County. So here, you can see the population and what's growing, and actually the areas that it's actually growing in. And if you could see where the red is, that's where the largest population changes is happening. And this is forecast all the way out to 2050. So there's a lot of areas that's, that's growing.
That's very interesting, because we think of District One, Two as being...
Can you go back?
Less dense, and that area is experiencing the most population change just within the last seven years, seven, eight years.
But that also corresponds to the growth in senior housing, because that area has had a lot of senior housing put in.
Okay. That's very interesting.
Not much left in East Cobb to build.
That's a good point. Our Commissioner was sharing, her mic wasn't on, so I'll just, SKV can share, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, the population growth, the land isn't as, it's mostly built out in the East Cobb area than, than West Cobb, so.
Yeah.
Where a lot of the seniors and growth are coming to West Cobb.
So now we're going to talk about the housing stock and what that looks like over time. And here, you, the single bed, the single-family detached, it's mostly what type of housing has here in Cobb County. You can see it at sixty-four, sixty-six point four percent, and then if you look at the two bedrooms, three, four units, those are at much smaller rates. So Cobb County is majority single-family homes, and if you could look at the rate of change, so if you go down to the three and four-bedroom units, in 2010, there was eight thousand units, and then 2020, you, that, that housing was lost. So it, those, these are actual numbers, not, so there's, there's two, two thousand three hundred and ninety-two units that was, and within a ten-year span, is gone, whether it was to development, or whether it was to, we don't know why the trend is this, but these are actual numbers, so we don't know what happened. There could have been, over time, housing types could have changed when they tear down developments, and it could be, it could definitely be like four units, or housing, multifamily, that's kind of where we see these numbers are.
So those smaller apartments, I keep hearing about that missing middle housing type, and you could see the ones that are multifamily, but at smaller units are disappearing, which makes it difficult for, you'd have those unique housing options where it may not necessarily fit to have multi, large multifamily in certain areas. You could get away with a duplex or a triplex or quad.
Yes.
But you don't have that here. It's interesting.
Yes, yes, exactly. That is exactly what the missing middle does. When you, when the housing stock changed like this, most people, those workforce are always priced out when, in this type of atmosphere, and the market is rising, prices are rising, but income is not keeping up with that. Those individuals can't necessarily afford housing, single-family homes, so you're correct. Multi-units, smaller units, housing options is what's necessary to close that gap with the missing middle. So here's the number of bedrooms that was actually lost and over time, and keep in mind, I want to also make this caveat, that you know, it wasn't a lot of housing being built during our pandemic, so this, a lot of this could be contributed to the fact that we were not keeping pace, because there was a couple of years where there was no building going on, and normally, we would have been building and building and building, so this, the disparity wouldn't be so great. So we need to keep that in mind, all of us experiencing, and understand how that affects a lot of stuff. So here's the number of bedroom and the household size in comparison to how many people and what the bedroom size is. So this, and this is, again, just in Cobb County, but if you look at like one bedrooms, one, there's one bedrooms, there's seven, seventy-two thousand people that could possibly be interested in one bedroom. They are just like slated as being one person to a family. However, one person in a family don't mean that they just want one bedroom, so keep that in mind. So according to the data that we received, if one person wanted a one bedroom at that rate, look at the deficit of what you have to offer as far as housing stock. And that's it, and so you can see the largest disparity between one and two bedrooms. Like that's a lot of people who was, it could possibly be interested in a one bedroom or a two-bedroom, but the housing stock doesn't permit them to be able to, to get housing. And so the deficit, just a one bedroom, is forty-three thousand units. That's, that's a huge number of individuals that should be housed, or could be housed, but not able to find housing because the stock is not available. And here is a mapping mismatch. So if you look at the map on the right-hand side, there, those are the amount of two bedrooms that's available in Cobb County. But if you look at the map on the left-hand side, which is the higher map, those are the households of people who need those housing. So if you, those are the areas, those, those areas there, if you put those on top of each other, you can clearly see the deficit of people needing housing, but the bottom map shows what's available.
Is, is this for rental or for homeowner?
This is for, this is just for rental, yes.
Okay.
This is the rental stock. Give you a second look at that.
This is rental stock, and there's an assumption made that a two-person household will want a two-bedroom, that they wouldn't desire...
A three-bedroom.
A three or four.
Or like...
But we're just saying, they're not available, even if they did desire, okay?
So let's talk about the Cobb County incomes and change over time. And this is kind of like spread, painting the picture on how the cost burdenedness does not only affect the, our lower-income residents, it's starting to affect up to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So that's our police officers, our nurses, our teachers, so anywhere between fifty to seventy-five thousand, college-educated, those individuals that fall in that tax bracket with the housing market that we currently have, they find themselves being cost burdened. So here is, is the change over in income. If you look at the amount of people that was making a certain amount of money, pay attention, if I can bring your attention to the third category on the bottom, where it's fifteen to twenty-four thousand, that's our lower M of, like our gas station attendants and our Starbucks employees and people that are service industry that make those lower amounts. And if you look at it in Cobb County, those people can't afford to live here. That is why you show that deficit there. And if you go all the way up to, there's, now, there is an increase in spike of people moving to Cobb County that makes over two hundred thousand dollars a year. This information also depicts that. The housing market for our lower income is just not feasible for them to live here, so they have to drive to Cobb County to work here, whereas people who make enough money could afford to live here. And if you look at 2010, only six percent at, in 2010, of people who made that amount of money was in Cobb County. Now it's over twelve percent, so that has doubled.
May you go back to that prior slide?
Sure.
This is a change in household income, so is it comparing the same household from ten to twenty, or is it just looking at percent change in general for household, meaning that for, we used to have, let's say, if you look at less than ten thousand, we used to have blue, and now the number of households that make less than ten thousand, they are less in Cobb?
Yes, they're decreasing. And then so on the opposite end, it's saying that people make over two hundred... And then so on the opposite, opposite end, it's saying that people make over two hundred thousand dollars in Cobb is increasing.
Okay, alright.
And a hundred and a hundred and fifty into.
Yeah. So on the other end where the lower income, if you, you can even go to where like fifty to seventy for our workforce.
Yes.
It's, it, it shows that deficit as well.
And you know, you hear that anecdotally, um, I'll be with you in a second. I've had some people contact me saying that they've had challenges just finding housing at the three hundred thousand dollar mark. They just can't find it. And those might be homes attractive to those of that income level.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, and I, and I'm kind of just taking a whole bunch of notes or questions here, but there seems to be conclusions that I would like to see a little bit that, how the data that we're seeing connects to some of those conclusions. Cause not that the conclusions are wrong, there's just, there are a couple of jumps there. And I don't know if there's a lot more that we can see on that front. Cause even if you, if you were to just look at this and not think about any, you know, potential biases or same household to same household, the data here could tell the story, well, people that live here are earning more income and that there are fewer people who, even the people that make a little bit are earning more income. I don't think that's the story of Cobb, right? But to, uh, cause that's not the story that you gave or the conclusion that you gave. But that is a jump and we're missing the other data points to get there. And there are some other breakdowns that I'm also interested in around like percentage occupancy by type of housing. Cause having the kind of the general, it's hard to say, well, we don't have enough housing stock. You know, maybe that housing stock isn't desired. But your conclusion is what it is. So I'm asking for that additional part to complete that story.
Yes, yes. So the assessment, it gives that information, that, that deeper dive to where you can see that connection. But also you, you, you have to also take in consideration population increase. So it's not those people that are actually coming here. And so that's this information that allows us to gather this and, and be able to show these trends.
Right. Thank you. Yeah. Well, if it, if it includes it in the other piece, then that'll be great to see. Cause that's really where the heart of the story is.
Yes.
Is whatever connects the data to the conclusion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cause I hear Commissioner Richard saying, we can just really just take this data at face value if we didn't draw assumptions. We just know this amount at this household, but some of the other, um, impacts or, you know, results that you've been sharing.
Yeah.
There could be multiple reasons as to why.
Exactly. So this is what's actually trending. Why? It's, it's subjective. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues as to why this could be happening. So again, like before, when I mentioned, just because you have one bedroom people, one single persons doesn't mean that they just want to send, they want a one bedroom. We're just able to show that this, how many people are claiming for our census that are one bed, one person in their household. So we're just using just the basic data. Maybe those one-person households actually want two bedrooms. But even with that, this data shows that that's not available as well.
Okay.
So here is that, we talked about that. You talked, uh, Chairwoman Cupid about that missing middle, that workforce housing. Here is some information that we have gathered. This is current information from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And so if you could see what these nurses, our administrator, the teachers, bus drivers actually make at an entry-level position. And so the highest step is thirty years, thirty years of experience, thirty years of being on the job. And look at the difference in how much they make. And even after being in their job
Yes.
for thirty years, they still find themselves being cost burdened in this area.
This is deep.
Yeah.
Cause especially when you use our own data and our own.
This is, this is just Cobb County's data. But, but keep in mind, I mean, because of this housing industry that we're going, this is not only happening in Cobb County. This is what's trending nationwide.
Okay.
But definitely these is how it affects here in, in Cobb County. So again, these are most of, of these individuals that work in these particular jobs can't afford to live here. So that contributes to traffic. That contributes to them having to find transportation on how to get to work. Because of their, they would be severely cost burdened if they had to go look for housing at the rate that the housing is right now.
And that impacts traffic patterns. Cause if they can't live here, they gotta get here somehow.
Yes.
Every day.
Every day. And coming and going. So it's not like they could, they don't make that much money and they can just like drive to work for ten minutes. It's, they're actually being bussed, they're actually coming in to driving in, transportation into the, to some of these areas. I'll give you a little bit of clear understanding when I show you how the cities broke down. So if we did pull out four cities in Cobb County, so you'll be able to see a little bit of that in just a second. So here again, this is some information that we got off of Zillow as to.
I'm sorry, if you can, yes, if I'm not looking at your mic, just let me know that you have a question. Go ahead.
Um, if you can go back to the previous slide, please?
Sure.
So where I'm bothered at your presentation, if you go back to the change in household income, when you say household, the assumption is based on there's more than one individual, right? Because it's a household. Or are we talking?
Not necessarily.
Are we talking one individual?
A household can be at any size. So one or however many. There is no cap on household. Anybody just paying rent is one household, whether it's one person there or two persons there.
But if there's two persons paying rent in one house, again, that's going to change your total income. So, you know, to sit there and say that, you know, these salaries don't provide your ability to buy housing here, it doesn't look that you could have somebody else living in the house with you to share that burden of rent.
You could, but in a later slide, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that I think it's in this slide deck that you'll see that the, the composition of families are actually changing as well. So you'll see a single family, a mom, a single mom with children. You, our composition is actually changing. So it's not the two-family household, mom and dad, two kids type scenario as it used to be. The, the trend is just not here. Again, this is a national trend that our households are changing.
Right, I understand that. But then I also take an issue with you saying that people are taking buses to get to, you know, to work. And if you're looking at just the schools that you have here, we know that we don't have bus routes that take teachers to schools. I mean, we, we know our bus system doesn't function that way. Not public school buses, I'm talking the employees. So I'm not quite sure how you're.
Workforce, just our workforce. These are just, just a few of the individuals that of, uh, professions that we pulled out, but total workforce, there's a lot of people, like there's cleaners, there's, there's gas station attendants. There's a lot of other workforce that we didn't mention here. That's a lot lower. Yeah, these are most of the ones that most people are, are familiar with and use. But if you look at workforce housing period and you look at individuals that are in our service industry, those individuals are not listed here.
Interestingly enough though, Cobb County Schools, that's our largest employer here in the county. So this data is going to have a significant impact on workforce numbers within the county.
And in the assessment, you'll see, we pulled out your employment. We identified what your employment is i- i- in Cobb County, your employment makeup. That information is found in the assessment.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Burrell?
What, what I'm seeing is what I think this is supposed to tell us is with these salaries for, um, teachers or bus drivers or whatever, you're, you're saying that the school nurse, whether she's married or not and has a household income of double that if her husband's working, you're saying that on this salary, they can't afford to live in Cobb is what I'm getting at.
I'm saying that the workforce that's listed here, if these were single families, one person to a household, they would not be able to live here and not be cost burdened.
And I'll share too, Cobb's median household income, household income is still eighty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-two. So even if we were to look at housing for that, for our median, um, income level, we can still see some challenge, um, challenge there.
And Commissioners, um, Renata's presentation, she's about to get into talking more about the house, home value here in Cobb and also the, the rents as they currently are. And then she'll start talking a little bit more about four different types of units, how much, what household income, whether it's one person or, or two or multiple earners in the household, what would be necessary in order to acquire various types of housing in Cobb? And also what the cost burden is at various salary points. So I think a lot of the questions will be answered as we continue moving forward through the presentation.
Thank you. So are we, we good with this slide here? Yes. So here again, here is the home values of just home values and rents in Cobb County. This is a, some information we just poured off Zillow in two thousand and twenty-three. And you can see that the home values are going up to four hundred thousand dollars. And then, uh, you can see what the rents are at two hundred thousand dollars just over the course of, uh, one, one, uh, one month in January. So this is just the January data. So the typical home Cobb increased up to two hundred and thirteen thousand since January two thousand and sixteen to four hundred and three thousand dollars in March of twenty twenty-three. So this here actually shows what the increase in home values are. And also it shows you what it is in rent. The same rental i- increase at some point, it, it was eleven hundred and fifty dollars. And now to rent those same units is nineteen hundred and seven dollars.
Just in a span of what, six, seven years?
Yes. This is, this is, these are annual. So it's the two thousand and sixteenth of January and then you see twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-three of January. So here is homeownership maximums and what the workforce, and it compares to the household, the question that, uh, Commissioner Richardson was getting to about the household incomes and the workforce. And it shows us in, in rental at the bottom and homeownership and what it would cost for a one-bedroom for a person to be at a hundred percent AMI and what it costs for a four-bedroom house and at a hundred percent AMI. And if you look at the housing prices, you had mentioned Chairwoman how three hundred thousand dollars, those are the homes that people can't, they can't find at the moment. This is, this is what would make them look like they're cost burdened. What those housings are and what it looks like as far as rent is concerned. Again, cost of living increased of two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. It went up thirty, thirty percent. The home values went up thirty percent while the income only rose twenty-three percent. The median gross rent and income, it increased from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty by thirty-six percent. Again, the household increase is only going up, only went up by twenty-three percent.
Can you go back to the last slide, please? I'm sorry, can you go back to the prior one?
This the home?
The one that had the AMI and the.
This one.
Do you know what the value is of our AMI here? I guess, um.
It is.
And it could be deduced from that.
It's in, it's actually in the assessment.
Okay.
I want to say it's ninety-four thousand, ninety-six. Yes.
Okay. So what this is, I just want to be clear, what you're sharing with me with that three hundred thousand that's in bold.
Uh huh.
Is that if you are at a hundred percent AMI, meaning that you are at the midpoint of our area's income distribution, then the max that you want to pay for a three-bedroom where you're not cost burdened is three hundred thousand, nine hundred dollars. Okay. And then, um, same for rent, for that bolded number, the max at that AMI is going to be twenty-five hundred.
Right, and for three bedrooms. So if you're paying over that, then you'll find yourself in
Okay.
a cost burden situation. So home values, the difference is thirty percent is what the home values went up to, but, uh, income only rose by twenty-three percent. And then thirty-six percent is what the rent went up to. But again, the income only went up by twenty-three percent. And here again, it shows us what that cost burden radius at what salaries are being mostly cost burdened in, in this area. And if you look at those individuals who are making seventy-five thousand dollars here yet in Cobb, you see that they are now starting to be cost burdened. Whereas before in two thousand, and this is between rental and owners. There's the ninety-two, six, seven is that area, the area median income in this area. Now, here is what it used to be. Here is that information that we got, we gathered in two thousand and twenty. It was eighty-six. So it went from eighty-six to ninety-two right now. So this is the Atlanta metro area. You can see what it is in the, is in comparison to what is happening here in Cobb County. It shows you the, the rent types and it shows you what, in comparison, what it is into the Atlanta metro area. So here is some of the breakdowns. So you can actually see where some of these trends are actually happening in the city. It hasn't broke down a little bit. So it changes. You can see that Astell and Powder Springs are the two cities that are, have the most gross population over the last ten years from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Those two, and then Cobb, just that bottom number is Cobb County as a whole. But as the cities look, those two particular cities, Astell and Powder Springs are both showing us. All of them actually is growth, but those two are significant amount of change.
Yes, can, I'm sorry, if you can just go back.
No problem.
Thank you.
And here it is, where you can see the population, the household and then the household units. So even with the, with, even with our stale being at large growth, look at how the population and households and household units are actually trending. They're, they're actually growing with the population in Astell. But if you look at, uh, Powder Springs and Marietta, you can see that there's a difference in household units and actually population.
Very interesting.
So this is, is actually, uh, when you think of Cobb County as a whole, you would think that the, the, you would probably have to look at this to see that the disparities in the different cities actually presents a different picture. So again, here is the, the changes. Just pulled out two ci- two cities. We have Kennesaw and we have Marietta. If you could look at the age of population and how it's changing and how it's changed. If you look at, um, the one I want to bring your attention to is the twenty to twenty-four in Kennesaw. Look at what, what it was in twenty-twenty and then look at what it is. So the age is, is changing. I was talking about earlier how that demographics of our family makeup is actually changing. This gives you that information as to what ages are growing and which ages are at, are decreasing. And of course, because of population, if you look at like Kennesaw in twenty-twenty, look how many more people at those ages are now here in the area. And even in, uh, Marietta in twenty-twenty, the age seventy to seventy-four, that's a huge population increase.
Yes.
Yeah, this actually tells a very interesting story. It looks like you've got kind of two spikes on the Kennesaw graph. As far as the age differentiation.
Yes.
I think that explains quite a bit because you've got the collegiate.
The school.
I think that explains quite a bit because you've got the collegiate, the school, put, yeah.
Yes.
And on the other one, it's one spike, but primarily.
Yes, but in two thousand and twenty, even though we had that, we have the case, Kentucky is a Kennesaw state here. Look at the growth there, just in two thousand and twenty, how many people are attending that university. We're assuming, we're assuming that this is again, an assumption that these individuals at this age population has increased because of the university.
It might be good to see something that looks like more of a rate of change, so you can actually see how that-
I think that data is in the assessment. So if you look at the assessment itself. Again, this is really data-heavy, so just pulling out a few of the points to try to paint the picture so you guys can understand, it's kind of tough to pull it out to make sure that you kind of get a good picture of what's going on. But actually, the assessment speaks to it. And here, here again, it shows when we talked about that composition of family and how in like the city of Acworth, there used to be a whole lot of four household that was four people, four persons in that household. It's down by a hundred and fifty individuals of households in that area. And look at one-person households, it increased by twenty-five percent. And if you look across the board and you look at the increase of one-person households, you can see that increase being deflected here.
Do we have a story on the increase of five-person households?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a story on the increase in five-person households? I mean, those are double digits all the way across.
Well, I don't have that information, but we could definitely make sure you can get it.
Okay. The other stories I can rationalize a little bit better.
I'm just going to go out and say that because of those are five persons, three families, three kids in a household increase. So family composition in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is up where it's more affordable. You saw Acworth housing trending was different than the other areas where it was a lack of housing for that population, that number of households. And here's the housing stock versus the people in the housing. So again, this is that information that I presented earlier broken down by the cities. You can kind of see one-person household and what, how many units you have available in those particular four cities. And let me bring your attention to Powder Springs, on how it's indicating that a little bit over a thousand individuals, households may be interested, that's one single-family household, but look at the amount of stock of housing of one-person, one-bedroom units.
I get it. They just don't have the option.
Right. Also, look at Powder Springs, they have a large number of three-bedroom units and not a lot of families to occupy those three-bedroom units. Again, in Acworth and Astell, you know, the three bedrooms, the housing, four-bedroom housing, three-bedroom housing, single-family, which is what normally most families have, two bedroom, husband, wife, children, those who occupy that. But now that the population is changing, we have a larger stock in that in amount of people that actually want this type of housing. So here, if you want to look at the housing types, single-family housing, Acworth has seventy-two percent of single-family housing. Astell, seventy-four percent. Everywhere but in Marietta, where they have less single, they only have forty-three percent of their housing type is single-family. Whereas in Powder Springs, almost ninety percent of the housing type in Powder Springs is single-family. So it kind of gives you a breakdown what those units look like in those areas, what type of housing.
Yeah, Marietta and Smyrna seem to have a more diverse mix.
Housing stock, yes. They have a lot of different types. You can see like Astell, like multifamily, twenty to forty-nine units, they're zero percent. So this kind of tells you those last four, between five bedrooms and more, those are the multifamilies. If you can look there to see what those housing, what that percentage of looked like, that would be that missing metal. So here's cost burden for renters. If you look, again, I'm trying to make the point that before you didn't have to make a whole lot of, you had to make, you know, make it fifty thousand dollars at some point didn't cause you to be cost burdened. But the way we see the trends are going, even to make seventy-five thousand dollars a year, you still find yourself to be cost burdened. And it kind of breaks it down in the cities. We talked about this earlier about what Cobb County looked like, but now this just breaks it down for renters. And if you can see the increase in two thousand and fifteen, look at Smyrna. In two thousand and fifteen, a person making fifty thousand dollars, fifty to seventy-four thousand dollars, they wasn't cost burdened. It was very, the number was very low of them being cost burdened. But now if you look at in two thousand and twenty, even if you're making that amount of money, you still find yourself in a situation where you find yourself cost burdened.
A third.
So we look at building permits. We look at who is building. Of course, we've already got that data. This is just another depiction of where those multifamilies can be found, where they're being permitted at. You know, in Acworth, they had, you see that the multifamilies, five units, they did a whole lot of permitting in two thousand and sixteen, which assisted them now. So they're not as, their housing stock is a little bit better to meet the needs of the individuals there. But if you look at Powder Springs and Marietta and look at since two thousand and sixteen, how much permitting of multifamilies they have. So that kind of tells the picture right there. That missing metal, those people that say will afford that different housing stock, it's not, it's not being permitted. It hasn't been permitted, which is why it's a big difference in just the divide is where we find ourselves today. And of course, you can probably figure it out that Kennesaw, where we have the universities, we have smaller units, they have a whole lot of multifamily there, because that's what those, end of those residents in Kennesaw, that's the housing stock that they need there for that location. So here's the summaries and some key findings. Again, the rate of production of housing has not kept up with the number of households. Building permits, stock reviews, majority, single-family homes. Again, takes away that missing metal. Low rental vacancy, the supply and demand situation. If you don't have a whole lot of vacant, if you don't have a whole lot of property to rent, then the prices go up. The senior population is growing, indicated the one- and two-bedroom units that you show less of. So again, if, there could be a deeper dive to figure out why these things are happening. Again, what I'm reporting today is what's trending. So the Metro Atlanta housing strategies. If you look at the subdivisions of the housing strategies, it's broken down the subdivision. And look at Cobb, this is exactly what's going on in Cobb. It says for submarket one, what you see is in yellow, you can see down there, this gives you an information on how to mitigate some of these issues by using this tool. Housing, submarket six, what do you need to do to address the housing issues in that area? So this is what it looks like, and it breaks it down into different submarkets. So they can't always, like housing is not a one-off fix thing. Creating multifamilies in every city in Cobb is not going to solve the problem. Every city in Cobb doesn't need multifamily. So this submarket breaks it down to what the need could be and how to preserve housing in these areas. So that's what the big picture looks like. And here are some ways that you can mitigate that. Like for an example, in submarket one, reduce development, cost and barriers, leverage public land, like these give you strategies on how to mitigate those different markets. So not only do we understand where the situations are coming from, we kind of develop a tool that can be helpful on how to mitigate that.
Right, thank you.
So again, these are the four, the six topics that we have designated to what you could do to mitigate some of the issues that we find here. So the preserving affordable housing, developing a leadership. And I believe, I'm sure that Cobb County has a housing task force, because I've sent in on some of those meetings. So this kind of information could help drive the direction that they would probably need to go in to start to help mitigate some of these housing issues.
No, this study was a significant step forward because when they were determining different options for addressing housing, I think we all came to the conclusion that we needed to understand what we had in the first place. And so I know they're very pleased to see this move forward because this will help give them a sense of direction as to how they can better tackle the issues that we have here.
And me and Kristen also, we are in on those conversations and willing to offer what other kind of data. For an example, if they come to a roadblock where they can't understand why the data, what the data is, we're willing and we sit on, we listen to those calls so we can make sure that wherever they may find themselves and looking in whatever direction, that whatever information we could provide to assist with them moving forward is what we plan to do. So I'm nearing the end, but here are some recommendations. Again, the housing task force, leveraging public land, addressing blight issues. And again, every city, every day, just because this is an overview of Cobb County, there's not blight everywhere, but where there is blight, addressing those issues, promoting creative collaborations, public-private partnerships and development. So here are just some of the recommendations for those submarkets. They're different in the submarkets that you guys saw here, that we could do to help to mitigate some of these issues. And again, preservation. There is subsidized housing here in Cobb County. You guys, I don't know if you understand that low-income tax credit, but those are, they're going to be falling off. You know, when those things are built in twenty years, after twenty years, they no longer have to be subsidized. Then they fall off. So in order to preserve those housing, what needs to happen? Because if that's, say, twenty units of affordable housing and a lack tag, and once those units become market rate, those twenty families are not going to have anywhere to go because of the cost burden is in the area. So if you guys got any questions? Again, if you take a look at the assessments that you guys have, if you have, please don't hesitate. My information is on here and it's also on the assessment. You need some more clarity or some understanding about where this data, all of the data is labeled. But how and what those trends look like, I will be happy to further discuss this. Anyone else have any-
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Renata?
No questions, just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate this presentation. Certainly interested in the data, but I really love the toolkit that was proposed at the end that actually considers kind of the diversity across Cobb County and what the different needs are by submarket.
Yeah, if you, you can actually, that's a real interactive tool, so it's open to the public. So being able to use that and see how it compares to counties around you is definitely helpful.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Jessica, for just being on top of this. I know they've been anticipating this for a while and for engaging with the task force. And ARC, thank you for being a continuing partner for us here at the county.
Thank you.
And that's it for us today, we just appreciate your time today and letting us present to you on economic development and housing assessment. I think the housing assessment is, again, it's very data-heavy, so it's intended to kind of give you a snapshot of what things look like. And from here, we're looking forward to working with the board. Of course, we have the countywide strategic plan, housing was a key element of that, as you all consider that as well. So we're glad to work with the board and on your policy direction moving forward on the housing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, our work session is concluded.